It is 6:00 PM on May 10th. And I will go ahead and call the Planning and Zoning Meeting, Regular Meeting, to order. All our commissioners are present, so would you please stand and join me in the Pledge Item three is Citizen Comment, period. If we have any citizens who would like to speak, they should have signed up in advance, and we do not. So we will move on past that and move to item four, Business Items. The following items are for discussion, consideration, and action. For A is Approval of Minutes for November 9th. I take it that all the commissioners have reviewed the minutes? And does anyone have any edits or any comments they'd like to make on the minutes? If not, could I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve. Be minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Item four B. But before we get to four B, I would just like to remind everyone that Planning and Zoning is a recommending body to City Council. City Council will ultimately make the decision regarding petitions. And with that, we will move to four B, Petition by Eric T. Fisher for Rezoning from Residential, Resident Agriculture, RA District, also known as Agriculture and Agricultural Homestead, AG District, to Neighborhood Services, B1 District, also known as Community Commercial, CC District, on a 1.707 acre tract of land out of the George M. Dolson Survey 96, Abstract 120, Comal County, Texas, and being late, being out of a called 1.734 acre tract described in document number 201406013130 of the official public records of Comal County, Texas. The property is located adjacent to FM 2252 South of 19295, FM 2252 in Garden Ridge, Texas. I believe Mr. Fisher is present. Would you like to come forward and make your presentation?
No real presentation. Here we go. Was it talking loud enough? No real presentation, just like to rezone it so we could put a, we have already submitted it to Nancy, what we want to put there, a mixed-use type building community with a bar, ice cream shop, and a barber shop. There'll also be an area for a play area and some pickleball courts, as well as some, hopefully, some hookups for some food trucks. And we're going to do kind of what it looked, basically, it'll look like a Garden Ridge Park, but we'll have some seating for, if everyone can just go out and eat and have food trucks under the trees. So kind of trying to get something out there, a little bit, something for everyone. And more importantly, instead of sending everyone to shirt, ciblo, New Braunfels, San Antonio, we have somewhere here in town where you can go and enjoy each other's company. And that's why we want to switch it over. All good? Want this off?
I asked him to turn off his, and I turned. Okay, moving on to item four B two, Hold a Public Hearing as Required by Ordinance 13. I will open the public hearing at 6:05 PM. Anybody wishing to speak has two minutes. Okay, doesn't appear that we have any takers on that. Therefore, I will close the public meeting, public hearing, rather, at 6:05 PM.
And just for the record, I have no written comments.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you. Item four B three, Discuss and Take Action. So commissioners, you heard what Mr. Fisher said about that tract of land? Does anybody have comments to make on that? It is located in the appropriate Community Commercial area. If we don't have any comments, then I will go ahead and ask for a motion. Nancy, did you?
I just wanted to state that the zoning that is being requested does match our master land use plan. Mr. Fisher has previously rezoned a property next to this property in the, for the same zoning classification that he's seeking. The two properties would, if zoning is approved tonight, he will combine both properties, and he will have to go through a plating process to make them one property or one lot. That's really all I, oh, also, this application was received prior to ordinance, the new ordinance 13 being active or in for, or inactive, I'm sorry. So we have to follow the prior zoning ordinance on this particular property.
So you're saying B1?
Well, it's B1.
Neighborhood Services.
Although B1 in our new ordinance converts to CC, Commercial, Community Commercial.
Right. Okay. Having heard Nancy's information, if anyone has any questions, you can ask now, or if not, could I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the petition by Mr. Fisher for the rezoning from a residential agriculture, RA District, also known as Agriculture and Agricultural Homestead, AG District, to the Neighborhood, B1 District, also known as the Community Commercial, CC District.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Anyone have any further questions or comments? If not, we'll put to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous, so we will recommend to City Council that say, an approval of that application, or petition, rather. Okay. I have so many papers here. The next item on the agenda is item B, C? Oh, no, I haven't opened it yet. Huh? Next item on the agenda is four C, Petition by Guadalupe Ready Mix, care of Jeffrey L. Earl, attorney for applicant, for the issuance of a special use permit for construction and operation of a concrete batch plant on seven and one-half, 7.5 acres leased out of A-671 SUR-95 E Woodruff Acres, 34.083, owned by Lehigh Hansen Materials South, LLC. The property is zoned in industrial zone, Z1 District, also known as Heavy Industrial, HI District, and located at 20762 FM 2252, Garden Ridge, Texas. Nancy, would you like to introduce the request?
Guadalupe Ready Mix, in care of Jeffrey L. Earl, attorney for the applicant, applied for a special use permit for the construction and operation of a concrete batch plant. We received the application on November 30th, 2022, and we, in review of the application, we found that there were some things that we needed additional information on. We submitted some requests for some additional information. We received a response back, and in addition to that response, we received it on, the information on April 3rd, 2023. And with that additional information, they submitted a revised master plan or site plan for the project. However, they did not address all items that we had requested information on. I can touch on those items if y'all desire. When you look at the plan, all of you have a copy of it in your packet, it indicates two silos for a maximum height of 87 feet. They addressed the screening, however, the additional screening they added from the original submission is a 10-foot concrete brick screening wall. The 10-foot wall is beyond the city's fence height requirement of six feet. They also have indicated what portion of the 33.867 acre tract that they are leasing seven and a half acres on. However, the area that's indicated as being the leased area does not encompass the drive nor the waterline infrastructure that is shown on the site plan. Couple of additional things that were not addressed is, we had asked if the diesel storage tank was going to be buried. That was not addressed on the, on this plan. We had asked if the property was going to be gated at the entrance, and there is no indication of any kind of a gate or enclosure, secure, to secure that area. The site plan, also under your parking requirements, shows a maintenance shop of 1,500 square feet. However, from the original submission, they have removed it from this submission. And I, really, those are pretty much the highlights of the items that were not addressed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item four C, well, Nancy pretty well did the applicant presentation since the applicant is not present, and we will move to item four C two, Holding a Public Hearing. The public hearing, should anyone wish to speak, we're limiting it to two minutes per citizen, and if anyone wishes to speak after you speak, would you please sign the listing that's right there on that first table? So I'll open the public hearing at four, I mean, 6:14 PM. Anyone who wishes to speak? I know we do have a written comment, but I'm opening it up to anyone present first. If not, then Marissa, you can go ahead and read the comment.
Janice Wiest Rose, 20469 FM 2252. If the approval is given to Guadalupe Ready Mix, I will be able to see their silos and operations from my front porch and house. I am already dealing with all the dust and noise from Heidelberg Materials. I can't imagine dealing with more traffic. In Mr. Earl's letter to the City Secretary on November 30th, 2022, regarding the application for variance, he states the application is being submitted for only 7.5 acres, but he doesn't address the effect of increased traffic. We were told at the public hearing in 2022, Guadalupe Ready Mix would be running approximately 200 concrete trucks a day, 100 full trucks and 100 empty trucks returning to the plant. In addition, there will be aggregate trucks, approximately 150, crossing from 2252 to Heidelberg Materials with the aggregate. I'm sure you have all been on 2252 when there is an accident or construction on I-35. Traffic can be backed up bumper to bumper from 3009 to the entrance to Hanson and FM 482. In addition, this has not mentioned the students and parents that travel 2252 to and from Danville Middle School and Davenport High School. Plus, there will be a new elementary school opening in the future by Danville Middle School. I've been a lifelong member of Bracken UMC and have walked to the Bracken Community Cemetery many times for a burial when we have a funeral at Bracken. Traffic is stopped when we follow this longtime tradition of our children, which began in 1871. Since 1871, we have added many new ministries, such as our very popular preschool, Pumpkin Patch, Fall Festival, and Scouts. I respectfully request that you deny this request from Guadalupe Ready Mix.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address.
Dawn Hatch, 8377.
Dawn, can you turn the mic on, please?
Dawn Hatch, 8377 Twisted Oaks. This is about an agreement from 1988 with the city. It's about what the land is zoned and intended to be used for. Garden Ridge has a diametrical vision. It wouldn't mind traffic generated from boutiques, coffee joints, but on the other hand, doesn't want industrial businesses. Yet the city zones the property to allow for industrial, and then the city turns around and does everything in its power to thwart due process and break government regulations. Whatever the business is, more traffic will be generated. Moreover, traffic is not the issue. The issue is abiding by the agreement with Hanson. I heard comments at the BOA meeting that GUAD was a greedy business, and all it wanted to do was make money, and it has money to hire a lawyer, so that makes GUAD greedy. Of course, it's convenient for them to be next to Hanson. Do we not live in a country that embraces capitalism? Moreover, a company making money isn't the issue at hand. The issue is abiding by the agreement with Hanson. I don't want the city to get sued again. If anything's been learned from these meetings, it's that it costs the city a lot of money, over $15,000 when the city had to defend Mr. Domgard's lawsuit about his pool. So that's not a good use of our taxpayer dollars. Don't let it get to a lawsuit being filed by GUAD and having the potential of a judge awarding GUAD thousands in attorney fees, which they can ask for and which the judge might award to them. Please, just focus on the issues at hand and that it's an abiding agreement and honor the terms of the agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I will close the public hearing at 6:19 PM. Item four C three, Discuss and Take Action. Commissioners, anyone wish to speak?
I do have some concerns and discrepancies on, on the current site plan as submitted by Guadalupe Ready Mix. One of them is, you know, with the site plan as submitted, there's no variance requested for the two silos, which on the site plan has a minimum height of 87 feet. This is clearly against ordinance 13 that has been approved by council. Additionally, there is a no, no variance requested also for, for the 10-foot tall concrete block screening, which is going to be facing FM 2252. This is also against, you know, the ordinance 13, there's no variance submitted in this petition. Lastly, my other concern is regarding the discrepancy on the site plan on the lease area of the seven and a half acres, which is identified on the site plan as a seven and a half acres that's being leased out, which out of the 33.67 acres means that the rest of the improvements outside of that leased area are not being included, which is the roadway or driveway that's leading up to, that gets you into the property. Additionally, the waterline, which, of course, that does affect the calculations of the impervious cover. So those are my three, three concerns to that, to the current site plan that I've, that I have. With that, I'd like to already move into my, if it's okay, Chair, to make a motion on the, on Agenda Item four C. I'd like to make a motion to recommend to the City Council the denial of the special use permit as requested by Guadalupe Ready Mix for the construction and operation of a concrete batch plant on the following reasons. Due to the no variance requested for, on the site, as, as submitted, for the two silos for the minimum height of 87 feet, which is against ordinance 13, and the variance was not, was denied by council just recently by the Board of Adjustments. Also, the following, the second reason is the site plan states there's a 10-foot tall concrete block screening, which, which is facing FM 2250, 2252, to serve as a screening, which is also against ordinance 13 and was not applied for. The last one is the discrepancy on the site plan regarding the lease area of the seven and a half acres, which means there are improvements outside the leased area, and it affects the calculations of the impervious cover. That's, those are my, that's my motion.
Okay. Commissioners, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion regarding the denial recommendation?
I, I.
Only regarding the denial recommendation. That's the motion.
My co-commissioner spoke to the variant, some variances they didn't speak to. I was under the impression we were only considering the special use permits tonight, not the variances.
We are not considering variances.
Okay.
But, so you are correct in that.
The other thing I wanted, wanted to know is when an applicant does not appear before us in a public hearing, is that automatically exclude them from coming back without putting in another applicant, application? Or do they put another application, come all over, come, come again with another public hearing, or what, what happens when the applicant doesn't show up?
The applicant, we received nothing from the applicant asking to withdraw, so Planning and Zoning is obligated to conduct the public hearing, and your recommendation will go to City Council.
I do have one question. I just want to make sure I understand, we, that the motion is to deny because no variance?
No.
Because that's what it sounded like? Or is the motion to deny because they do not meet the standards?
There's three issues that he made the motion on, that are a discrepancy in what was submitted to.
I got that.
Okay. That's what he made his motion of denial on, was that.
Okay. Because I heard the, for not applying for variance.
Well, what's on the site.
I'm just clarifying, that's all I'm trying to do.
Right, on the site map, there are some.
I get that.
Okay.
All I'm doing is clarifying the motion.
Right.
For denial, and the basis of the denial.
Do you? Would you like me to just restate, or do you want to restate?
I can restate.
Well, we can have, we can have our, our Madam Secretary read that.
Read that, okay, very good.
So I have, a motion was made by Vice Chair Jackman, seconded by Commissioner Leatherberry, to recommend to City Council denial of the petition by Guadalupe Ready Mix. The rest will be filled in later, all of the Agenda item wording, on the following reasons. The height requirements requested on the site plan, the screening in the site plan, and discrepancies on the site plan related to the lease area affecting impervious cover calculations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, if not, we have a motion and a second for a denial of the recommendation to City Council regarding the issuance of a special use permit to Guadalupe Ready Mix due to the various discrepancies in the site plan, their master plan that was submitted to Planning and Zoning. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, unanimous? Thank you very much. Moving on through the agenda, we have item four D, Items Applicable to the Planning and Zoning Commission Discussed at City Council Meetings. I don't have any to bring before the commission. Nancy, was there something in like the last couple of meetings that pertain to planning and zoning?
No.
I didn't think so.
No, I don't recall any.
Okay. So we'll close that item and move to item four E, Planning and Zoning Commission Activities and Projects. This has to do with the alternate compliance option as it relates to impervious cover, and this was a project that Commissioner Crowe and Commissioner Bates had brought forth. If you don't have any additional items with regard to that at this time, we can ask that that can be removed from the agenda going forward, and if something else comes forward, we can put it back on the agenda. Will that work, Marissa? Okay, so I think that's what we will do. Item four F, Future Agenda Items. Do commissioners have any input on future agenda items? None at this time, is what I'm gathering? Okay. Very good. All right. Item four F two.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I need clarification. Since, well, can we look ahead and discuss the role of planning and zoning going forward in the new way the city's going to be structured in terms of governance?
Nancy, do you understand what he's asking and? Nancy, do you understand what he's asking and?
However, that is not an, an, an agenda item tonight. It could be placed on a future agenda, but it's, tonight, it cannot be discussed.
That's what he was asking for, it's like.
Sure, yes.
We haven't gone through the formal adaptation of the city, I'm losing my, what's it called? What's it, um, home rule yet, so we can't put it on there because we haven't really accepted that yet. But I want to put it on next month's agenda to discuss the role of planning and zoning going forward.
Okay, so now.
Yeah.
Thank you. Item F two, announce the date, time, and location for the next meeting for planning and zoning. It will be June 14th, 2023, at 6:00 PM in this room. Now is item number five, Citizen Comment Period. We have a second citizen comment period for which you do not have to be signed up, and you are allowed to speak for two minutes. And so that is open at this time. Do we have any takers? If not, then we will close that citizen's comment period and move to item six, Adjournment. Can I have a motion?
I move to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, everyone.